Good morning and welcome to our service today. Let's take our songbooks, number 349, "I'll Sing Forever More," of Jesus. We'll sing both those verses and let's stand together as we sing. Amen. Too many times it's "we" or others are our song of praise, right? And we get the focus in the wrong place, and that's what special meetings are all about. Special meetings are all about us returning the focus on Jesus. Turn your eyes upon Jesus, look full in His wonderful face, and the things of earth, those are the things that bother us. The things of earth will grow strangely dim in the light of His glory and grace. You missed a great Sunday School class this morning, helping us push some reset buttons in our focus spiritually. Count it all joy when you fall into diverse, many different temptations, trials in life. Count it all joy. God has great things in mind for us if we turn our direction to Him and follow His word. It was a great lesson this morning in Sunday School. Appreciated that. But you know, I hope that you've come this morning with your cup empty, and don't make them have to dump your cup out first. Come with a cup empty and let the Lord fill up with things that you can use. You know what I often say? Draw that little circle around yourself in a cylinder up to God, and let God speak to you. Don't think, "Boy, this would sure apply to my wife," although that's so easy. But no, don't think this would sure apply to my wife, or don't think, you know, "This would be great if so-and-so would hear this." Just think, "God, I'm hearing it now and I need it." And let God speak to each of our hearts, and we'll all be the better for it, and He'll be glorified, and Jesus will be our song of praise. Let's bow for a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. Lord, thank you for every person who's come today. I pray, Lord, that you'd minister to our hearts. Thank you that you know each of us and our personal needs, whether someone needs to come to know Jesus as their Savior. You know that. And Lord, whether someone is walking apart from you as a Christian that needs to be drawn back, you know that. Maybe a Christian's trying to serve you and is a little discouraged, and you would know that. And so, Lord, we pray that the Holy Spirit would just minister to each of us as we have need this morning. We pray again that you'd empower, as Brother Mike preaches, that the Holy Spirit would speak through him, through your word. Lord, bless our time together, we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen. You may be seated. Again, we welcome you. And this week, we have special meetings. Brother Mike Mayner, he's been an evangelist for many years now, and much older man than I, but he's been an evangelist for many, many years, and served in Christian camps, Northern Baptist Camp, Bible College or Baptist Camp, just the camp, and then also with the... What's the name of that camp again down south? I forget.
The Wilds.
The Wilds, there we go. Served with Wilds, served with Kobyak, different camps. And so, he's been around young people, around family camps, and all these other things. But he's been in the Word of God. That's what makes the difference. And every time I've heard him speak, he's always... The Word of God is his message, and that's what makes a big difference. I'm glad that you're here this morning. It's a good number, I think, for Sunday morning. I see a few empty seats. But tonight, I'm hoping to see everybody here. Come back tonight. Amen? And we do have a rule: You don't leave until you promise to come back tonight. And so, I hope you'll be back tonight, and then Monday night, 6:30; Tuesday night, 6:30; Wednesday night, 6:30. And God has something for each of us, each of those services, so I trust that you'll just make it a point and plan to be here. If you aim at nothing, you'll hit it. If you aim at being here, I bet you will. And so, we'll look forward to you each night. All right, and number 445, "Standing on the Promises." I'm standing on the promises of God, standing on the promises of Christ the Lord, bound to Him eternally by love's strong cord, overcoming daily with the Spirit's sword, standing on the promises of God, standing, I'm standing, standing on the promises of God, my Savior, standing, standing. I'm standing on the promises of God, standing on the promises I cannot fail, listing every moment to the Spirit's call, resting in my Savior is my all-in-all, standing on the promises of God, standing, standing, standing on the promises of God, my Savior, standing, standing. I'm standing on the promises of God. Amen. I'm glad we have something to stand on, aren't you? All right. Well, you notice Mrs. Whitman is back at the piano helping out this morning. Glad to see that. The doctor said that she should go ahead and gave her a shot in her shoulder and said, "Now, go ahead and try to play the piano." And so, she's trying, folks. Give her a break. But we're glad that she's able to do that. Still pray. He said there's a 50-50 chance that surgery's going to be needed. And so, I pray about that. I hope it's not. But we do appreciate your prayer very, very, very much. All right, let's take a few announcements here. First of all, we do have the Junior Church, but they're down with us this morning for the first part of the service. After the ladies do their special number and song, we'll send them back to the Junior Church. Barb's ill, Brother Leon, is going to help them out this morning down there as well. And so, if you have a child aged five through the fifth grade, they'll be dismissed later on in the service to go down to the Junior Church room. Then, of course, tonight, we have the service at 6:30. I hope you'll be back for that. I'm looking, I'm asking God to give me some things that I need and guidance and direction in my own personal Christian walk. And so, the Lord is speaking to my heart as well as yours, I trust. And the song we used to sing, "Lord, send revival, Lord, send revival, Lord, send revival." Do you know the rest of it? "Begin the work in me, begin the work in me." And each of us can draw a step closer to the Lord. Each of us can make adjustments in our personal walk. We can become stagnant, draw back, and that's what special meetings are all about, to help us... Come on, come on. Let John Slide right in there. Somebody give him room there. All right, good job. And so, anyway, every one of us can make little adjustments in our Christian walk, and that's what the meetings are all about. Tonight, 6:30; Monday night, 6:30 with Evangelist Mike Mayner; Tuesday night, 6:30, same guy, Mission Evangelist Mike Mayner; and Wednesday night, Brother Mayner as well. I didn't tell you about all those, did I? But we will have nursery each night for children under four, age four and under. And then, of course, coming up Saturday, again, visitation at 1:30. Coming up in November, our annual harvest supper. Looking forward to that. Usually two weeks before Thanksgiving. That's always a great time of festivity. And then Thanksgiving, together as a church. And then, of course, on December 7th, once again, Brother Paul Hiscock will be with us, sharing sermon and song, kicking off our Christmas season with some stories behind some of the Christmas hymns and Christmas music as well. And so, welcome Lynn Rinker. And as others have been joining, we'll follow that up with a business meeting here shortly. And then baptism. Last week, Joel was baptized. I've got two or three waiting to be baptized. And so, Lord willing, next Sunday morning, we'll have a baptism again. Happy anniversary to Jeff and Debbie Jewell. How many years, Brother Jeff?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Amen. Wow, congratulations. Wonderful. And Debbie, you'd say forty-one wonderful years, right? As you shrugged your shoulders, okay? So, all right, well, we appreciate Jeff and Debbie. They were part of the starting of this church before I ever came and have been faithful servants of God through all these years. And just commendable to them, to their love for the Lord and service for the Lord. We appreciate them very much. Happy birthday, Brother Wayne Miller. Wayne not here this morning. And Eddie Dayfield, I think he's probably in the nursery. And he is just growing like a weed. And I remember when he was just crawling, but he's up and running now. And you got another one about ready to run around here, too. We appreciate, yeah. All right. Anybody here for the very first time? If this is the first time you've ever come to Bering County Baptist Church? All right, I don't think there are. We better have some first timers this week, right? Let's shoot for that, get them out for the meetings this week. Someone told me before service, they've got a couple lined up, maybe tonight and in the week. So, praise God for that, and let's see some folks come up for our service. Brother Leon.
Please open your Bibles to Proverbs, chapter 5. Proverbs, chapter 5, for scripture reading this morning. And if you're able to do so, please stand for a scripture reading as we read through Proverbs, chapter 5, verses 1 through 13. I'll be reading responsibly, me reading the first verse, then you follow with me on the second verse as we move through Proverbs 5, 1 through 13. Proverbs 5, "My son, attend unto my wisdom and bow thine ear to my understanding, that thou mayest regard discretion and that thy lips may keep knowledge; for the lips of a strange woman drop as a honeycomb, and her mouth is smoother than oil; but her end is bitter as wormwood, sharp as a two-edged sword. Her feet go down to death, her steps take hold on hell. Lest thou shouldst ponder the path of life, her ways are movable, that thou canst not know them. Hear me now, therefore, O ye children, and depart not from the words of my mouth. Remove thy way far from her, and come not nigh the door of her house, lest thou give thine honor unto others and thy years unto the cruel. Lest strangers be filled with thy wealth and thy labors be in the house of a stranger; and thou mourn at the last, when thy flesh and thy body are consumed, and say, 'How have I hated instruction and my heart despised, reproved.'" And let's read the last verse this morning together. "And have not obeyed the voice of my teachers, nor inclined mine ear to them that instructed me." Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for all that you do. We thank you for the book of Proverbs and the wisdom that it provides for our life, really in all areas, and as is mentioned in this area as well, as one of purity, to keep ourselves pure for you. But also, in all areas, that you have things that you have told for us that are really ultimately best for us, and it's up to us to then trust in that and do things your way. We thank you for all that you do. We thank you that your grace is sufficient for us and that you offer mercy to us. We thank you for all this again, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. May be seated.
And take your songbooks, number 365, "I Am Thine Oh Lord." 365. I am thine, oh Lord, I have heard thy voice and it's told thy love to me; but I long to rise in the arms of faith and be closer drawn to thee. Draw me nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to the cross where thou hast died. Draw me nearer, nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to thy precious bleeding side. Consecrate me now to thy service, Lord, by the power of grace divine. Let my soul look up with a steadfast hope and my will be lost in thy. Draw me nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to the cross where thou hast died. Draw me nearer, nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to thy precious bleeding side. O the pure daylight of a single hour that before thy throne I spent; when I heal in prayer and I seek with that I commune as friend with friend. Draw me nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to the cross where thou hast died. Draw me nearer, nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to thy precious bleeding side. There are depths of love that I cannot know till I cross the narrow sea. There are heights of joy that I may not greet till I rest in peace with thee. Draw me nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to the cross where thou hast died. Draw me nearer, nearer, nearer blessed Lord, to thy precious bleeding side. All right, if our ushers would come, please, we'll prepare and receive our offering at this time. And of course, we, the church survives, thrives as a result of the giving, the faithful giving of God's people. And as always, I commend you folks who are faithful in your giving. I never check, don't want to know who gives or how much they give. It's just that each of us ought to do that which God has called us upon to do. The tithe is the Lord's. And so, we honor Him with tithes and offerings. It's a form of worship, actually, where we are crediting God with the ability to work, the ability to have us gain means, and we're honoring Him and supporting His work here on earth as we give. No local church would suffer if every person connected with that local church would do his or her part financially. And so, it's up to us to do that. In addition to that, we'll be taking up a love offering. If you can't be here, that's a... I shouldn't even use that word. Never mind it. But if you want to give this morning, in addition to your tithe and offering, and mark or note that for the love offering for Brother Mayner, and tonight's offering, Monday night's offering, Tuesday night's offering, Wednesday night's offering, will all go to a love offering for Brother Mayner. And he, like other evangelists we have, depend on their livelihood, for the most part, from churches that have them come in and speak. And they bless us, we're supposed to bless those that bless us. And so, we want to be faithful to do that. No evangelist that comes in has ever asked me for a certain amount of money or a certain amount of things. I just want us to make sure that we do what we can to be a blessing and a benefit to them. And so, you just ask the Lord what he might have you give. Maybe you've been sitting on a thousand dollars you want to give. No, I'm just kidding, but I'm not really. But maybe you've been sitting on, you know, "I've got this burning a hole in my wallet, and Lord, you want me to give it to Brother Mayner's ministry?" Certainly feel free to let the Lord lead you however he does. And we want to see God honored and glorified in that. And you know, as Brother Mayner and other speakers that come are seeking to be a blessing to us, I want them to leave us having been a blessing to them as well. And so, let's ask God what he'd have us do. Brother Randy, would you ask God's blessings on the offering, please? Amen. Thank you, Heidi. I love it, as I mentioned last week, that our pianist tried to play operatories that we could sing along with, that we can know the words. It means more than just a melody alone. How many of you recognize that tune? It's in our songbook. Most of you did. But just think of that in terms of our special meetings. "I gave my life for thee, my precious blood I shed, that thou mightest ransom be and quicken from the dead." I gave. I gave my life for thee. What hast thou given for me? I gave. I gave my life for thee. And this is the question we have to ask ourselves. What hast thou given for me? So, a good thought. Thank you for that operatory. Brother Mayner's going to come, and he likes to do special things with the kids. I had the Junior Church kids come down this morning to just have a little part of the service. And he's going to come and do a few things, a few songs, or a couple songs, or whatever, with the kids. And then after that, we'll have the ladies group sing before he preaches, and then after they sing, you can take the kids out for Junior Church. Thank you, Brother Mike.
Well, good morning. It's exciting to be here, as I mentioned in Sunday School, but I always like singing with the munchkins. Yes, I do.
Ambers, whatever you want to call them. But if you may, you may have noticed coming in that there's some recordings back on the back table. And what those are, one is just a Fun Time Silly Song CD. Stuff I did at camps and retreats and even with our family conference, some of those silly songs that just tickle the funny bone. The other one is a Sacred CD. It's 12 songs that I've written. Five are fully orchestrated, the rest guitar, cello, violin. It's just really nicely done. One picking and grinning, one I think you'll enjoy. And then, the other recording back there is a children's CD-DVD combination. Now, if you're under 50, you probably no longer have a CD player or DVD player. You know, I've got an old enough car, I still have a CD player. Well, let's let you know that. But if you happen to have some of those apparatuses to play that material, they're back on the back table. The kids' one is, there are 20 songs that I've written. They're Patch the Pirate-ish. For years, I've written several songs, as I mentioned in Sunday School, for Majesty Music, Patch the Pirate. And you're going to be familiar with some of those songs if you grew up with Patch, like a lot of kids have. But it's two in one. The reason I did a DVD is, like we're going to do here, they're action songs on about 16 of them. So, give the kids something to help them remember and hopefully put into practice the music that's there. A lot of good principles in teaching. That's $25. Then the sacred is 12, fun one's $10. You know, just let me know what needs to be done. We'll try to get it all worked out. Hello, kids! How you doing? Okay? Sleeping on me, I tell you what. I did that for the old bald guy behind you. I did that, right, to get him waking up. He still doesn't know I'm talking to him. Well, guess what? I'm going to do some action songs with the kids, but guess what? This is crowd participation, so you all can kind of wake up and get stirred up and go with Mr. Mayner. Now, I forgot it, Patch, and I should have done it. I've got on the thumb drive all the kids' DVD things. Maybe I can show one of those during the week, just to give you an idea of what those are. But I'm going to give you... during the week, just to give you an idea of what those are, but I'm gonna give you the one that's first on the DVD. Say, oh boy, can I hear it? Oh, boy, that was real enthusiastic. So what it's about is being polite, you know, a good testimony is being polite, and when someone's talking to you, you look them in the eye. Yeah, you don't look down at your shoes, you don't pick boogers or eat them, those are disgusting. Yeah, that's true, it happens, it's still a phenomenon of the day, but you don't, you don't get distracted, no, you look them in the eye, that's marriage counseling, right there, okay? When your wife's talking to you, hobby lobby, hobby lobby, hobby lobby, and you just want to go anywhere but there, show that you care and look them in the eye. So that's the principle in teaching. Some cultures say that's impolite, but where we live, folks, that's a sign of, hey, I care, and I'm concerned about what you're saying. So everybody, everybody, take your thumbs like this, take your thumbs, can your doll baby take its thumbs and put it up here like this, or it'll sit right there, okay? Right there, hold the thumbs up, okay? So take his thumbs and repeat after Mr. Maynor, are you ready? Raise up your chin. See, when I say you repeat after me, okay, all right, here, let's go again, ready? Raise up your chin.
Raise up your chin.
Look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
When our talk begins.
When our talk begins.
Look me in the eye. Let's try it again. Raise up your chin.
Raise up your chin.
Look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
When our talk begins.
When our talk begins.
Look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
If you're looking at your hands.
Looking at your hands.
Staring at your knees.
Staring at your knees.
Looking all around.
Looking all around.
You're not looking at me.
You're not looking at me.
Raise up your chin.
Raise up your chin.
Well, look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
When our talk begins.
When our talk begins.
Look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
If you want to be polite.
If you want to be polite.
And do what's right.
And do what's right.
Well, give it a try.
Well, give it a try.
Look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
Raise up your chin.
Raise up your chin.
Well, look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
When our talk begins.
When our talk begins.
Uh, look me in the eye.
Look me in the eye.
Look at my left eye.
Look at my left eye.
Look at my right eye.
Look at my right eye.
Look at my eye teeth.
Look at my eye teeth.
My iPhone. Yes, give yourself a hand, nice job, just look me in the eye, good job, nicely done. Can you do this? Can you take your hands like this, and turn them like this, and give me the seal of approval? Go, ar, 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 very nicely done. You can tell this ain't my first rodeo, okay? We've been here and done this. All right, the next one is a new one that's not on the recording, I don't know if I ever had the money or take the time to do that, but it's one I was challenged to do. How many of you folks know the song, obey, obey, always obey? Now, one of the most simple, wonderful songs ever written is written by a friend of mine by the name of Matt Austin. Well, I gave it to Patch, you know, in Majesty Music, and it's on one of the CDs for Patch the Pirate, but it's just a very simple song. Well, the guy that wrote that is a pastor in Pennsylvania, one of my closest friends, and he wrote me, he just started in this church, was without a pastor for four years. Talk about digging out of a hole, talk about folks appreciating the Word of God. Well, he's doing his first vacation Bible school, and he says, Mike, I want you to come and help me do this. I said, Matt, you only have six kids in the church. He says, I don't care, I don't want that pressure, and I know this is what you can do without even a blink and a thought, hopefully a lot of prayer, but he says, would you come and do that? I said, sure. So his theme was, you know, in 2 Corinthians, chapter 5, verse 17, when you're a new creature in Christ, old things are passed away, what? All things become new. So he wrote a song, I wrote a song, he picked my song, okay? And, you know, he was a little too adult in his, you know, authorship of that song, mine was just the simplicity of my brain as a kid, so I came out with this, it's called, it's called, "A New Life Will Begin," it goes, "Out with the old, bump, bumpin', with the new, bump, bump, this is what Jesus can do for you. Out with the old, bump, bumpin', with the new, bump, bump, this is what Jesus can do for you." Ha, ha, you could even do that, 94-year-old person back there. All right, let's go, ready? "Out with the old, bump, bumpin', with the new, bump, bump, this is what Jesus can do for you. Out with the old..." You're not bump bumpin' with me. "Out with the old, bump, bumpin', with the new, bump, bump, this is what Jesus can do for you." Then it goes, "Jesus died upon the cross, and then He rose again. He died because He loves you to pay your debt of sin." Can we do that? "Jesus died upon the cross, and then He rose again. He died because He loves you to pay your debt of sin. Out with the old, in with the new, this is what Jesus can do for you. Out with the old, in with the new, this is what Jesus can do for you." Okay, "You must be born again." Wham, oh, wham, yeah, you got the hair. You must be born again to be a child of God, receive Him as your Savior, watch this, kids, watch this, then new life will begin. Boom! Can you do that?
Boom!
Everybody?
Boom!
Louder?
Boom!
Just Pastor?
Boom!
Thank you, okay. All right, let's go, ready? "You must be born again to be a child of God, receive Him as your Savior, then new life will begin.
Boom!
Out with the old, in with the new, this is what Jesus can do for you. Out with the old, in with the new, this is what Jesus can do for you. And you, and you, and you." Point to the person next to you, and you, and everybody else in there, give us have a hand, nicely done. Now, the ladies have to follow that, okay? So ladies, if you come at this time, and I think you have a special to bless us with, and I'm sure it'll be just a great ministry to our hearts.
Be calm.
Boom, don't fall the steps, boom, boom, don't fall, coming down, boom, boom, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, ladies, that was wonderful, 'cause it turns our eyes on who? On Jesus, amen? Turn your eyes on Jesus. Brother, why don't you come?
Well, I don't know how wounded Mrs. Pastor is, but I don't think either one of those ladies missed a key on the keyboard, and the pianos are still going ouch, okay? I mean, they get it done, don't they? I tell you, if you fall asleep during the piano playing, you're on medication, or you should be, one or the other, but excuse me while I take a little beverage here. If I gargle, would that be rude? I won't do that, I won't do that. Well, praise the Lord for how good He is to us all the time, and folks, if you really stay looking at Jesus, it's not too hard to practice what I parked on in Sunday School, that rejoice in the Lord always, and again, I say, rejoice, but boy, don't you think some of the saddest-looking scary people are Christians? They look like the dog gut, are you guys like in marriage difficulties here?
Yes, we are.
Pastor, Pastor, be the gentleman that you're supposed to be, and go sit with your wife. I tell you what, folks, I'll help as much as I can while I'm here counseling these two and try to get them in a better marriage relationship. I don't get paid enough to do all this counseling, people, I'm telling you. I love it when a pastor does something real bad, you know, and real funny, that's pretty funny. Oh my goodness. Well, praise the Lord again for His patience and goodness to us, even the midst of our faux pas of life, that just means messing up. Well, again, praise the Lord that we have an opportunity to gather, man, for several nights in a row, some good feeding of the Word of God, and just an enjoyment time of fellowship. Don't just get here and, you know, like, three seconds before it starts or five minutes after, you're missing part of what the local church is, it's fellowship, it's interaction one with a, I don't like people, you're probably not saved, okay? Or if you are saved, you're not right with God, 'cause all of Christianity, if you're gonna be Christ-like, which is a Christian, is others, giving, giving, and never stop giving, so come a few minutes early, don't just run out the back door, there's nothing that good on TV, and your kids miss, you know, 15 minutes or an hour, or maybe a couple of sleep, it's not gonna kill them, it may irritate the daylights out of you as a parent, but folks, understand what God is availing unto us this week, treasures of wisdom and knowledge, and enrich your life. Why? So you can be a fat cat Christian? No, so you can enrich the lives of others, that's why we get more preaching, we don't just become a Dead Sea Christian, or, again, a lazy boys overstuffed Christian, no, we get to give, that's the whole program, you get more to give more, and when you don't come to give, you don't have as much to give to your family and those you say you care for or you're burdened for. So make that choice. Some of you have never been to every meeting of the revival in your life, and you've been cheated. So I want you to break the bad habit of life choosing and just be with us. We'll party on without you, okay? We'll have a good time whether anybody else does or not, but we want you to join the party and enjoy what God is going to enrich us with, and just, again, have a great time of fellowship around the Blessed Word of God. Let's have a word of prayer, and then I'll give you some introduction here as far as the challenge this hour. Heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you, Lord, for, again, what we've already been blessed with, Lord, the good fellowship, the feeding on the Word of God in Sunday School. Lord, it still makes my head hurt thinking why some people don't come, you know, get all dressed up to come to just one service when you could have two, that's just like playing nine holes of golf and not finish all 18, it just doesn't make sense in my brain. So, Lord, help them to make maybe an adjustment, you know, to get all the good preaching they can, and get the instruction that's availed through this local church. And, Lord, even this week during revival, I've told them enough, I probably shouldn't say it again, but I will, they need to be here, they should be here, it shouldn't be a kind of, oh, should we go or not? No, it's just part of local church faithfulness, and, Lord, I just pray again that you'll give us wisdom, give us courage, help us to be creative as needed. Devil's gonna do everything he can to keep folks from being here. I mean, they're gonna have surprises on every turn, I see it happen every week, but, Lord, help them have determination and commitment, and, Lord, I just praise you again for your power and your wherewithal. Now, Lord, as we have this session, whether folks are watching via technology or they're here in this room, Lord, help us to listen carefully, to receive, Lord, your truths that are being presented. Lord, help us, as I mentioned in Sunday School, to take this personally, ask God to feed you personally, receive the truth personally, and rejoice in what God has blessed you with this hour. So, Lord, if there's someone here that's not even saved, they're not sure if they'd die today or they'd spend eternity, God save their soul. If they're watching via some technology, God, help them to listen to what's being presented, and if they still don't get it, give Pastor a call. They don't have to guess or hope so as far as where they're gonna spend all eternity. Lord, help folks to receive Jesus today as their personal Savior. So, Lord, again, I don't know if they're excited, but I'm on the edge of my seat as such, anticipating, God, what you're gonna do even in this service. Now, let it be prayed up, we're gonna give an invitation, I know it's not popular, some churches don't even think about it, don't do it anymore, but, Lord, when the challenge is given, response is the right response, again, to say yes, to, again, submit to whatever God you are looking to deal with in our lives. So help us, again, Lord, to be faithful and, again, pleasing in your sight as we have this challenge together, for it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen? Now, I already gave you some family responses as far as what's going on with us in our home and life and living. I am married, my wife, Shawn, I know folks never see her, she's not fictitious, my wife has so many health issues, it's hard for her to travel, but I have three children, my son Nathan lives down in Florida, he has, he's blessed with three grandchildren, and he works for Home Shopping Network, or I call it the Hoarder Shopping Network, saying thank you, so it's HSN, and then my other son just got released from his position at an advertisement firm, so he's in search mode right now, not just for a job, but he's not married. He's in his mid-40s, he'll probably never get married, because the older you stay single, the more selfish you become, and I hate to awaken you to that truth, but it's a reality, you get in your habits of life and dreaded be someone messes that up, you know, but he thinks he's there to bless all the women with his presence. Then, then my daughter, which is my favorite, she's the fruitful part of our family, I mentioned this morning, she's birthed 11 children, can I have an omi from the wives, the women? Yeah, oh, the pain of it all. Now, one of them is in glory, but she's got a one-year-old, and she has a 22-year-old, and they're ballast out, boys and girls, and I could, if you wanted, give you all their names, I mean, they're such a joy and a blessing to you. I'm Papa, Papa and Nana, and we don't have some of those weird names that you people make up, I don't know, Oogie Walk- Ukiwaki or Kawasaki. I mean, you hear some of the strangest stuff and go, where did that come from? But I'm a simple Nana and Papa. Of course, as the kids get older, they call me Pops. And we just, again, do a lot of different construction things and all that sort of stuff together. Now, one thing that Pastor didn't know about, and, you know, I appreciate preacher because I know he prays for me faithfully, and I count that as a great joy and an encouragement. But I've been coming up to Indiana for a lot of years because that's where I grew up, but that's where my mama was, okay? My mama now is in glory. Pastor hadn't heard that news. Ninety-two years old, blind as all get out. She fell, broke a couple of ribs, and they couldn't put Humpty Dumpty back together again. They just, they couldn't fix... Well, the doctor said I could fix her, but she couldn't stand the process of after, the surgery. So basically, she went to glory on morphine, which is just a sad thing to watch and be a part of. But she was in just so much pain. You know what? I was rejoicing. My mom has not really been there for the past four years, you know, like mama. And I still went to see her as much as I possibly could. She's my best bud of life and the sweetest sweetheart apart from my wife that I've ever known in my life, like it should be. But mom and I were radical, fanatical, fundamental Bible-believing people together. And I'd stay with her as long as she was still having her own home. And I'd sit in the morning after we had breakfast, and I'd just sit there and sing to her. And she'd sing along with me, and we just had such wonderful fellowship together. But I did the funeral, and I always wondered if I'd have the emotional stability to do my parents' funeral. But you know what? When it all came about, it was so right. And the thing to do, I preached my mom's funeral. Now, we had all kinds of testimonies and music and stuff from other family members, but I knew what mom wanted preached. And I'm telling you what, folks, this funeral home was packed out one side and down the other. And most of those people that were at the funeral, my mom prayed for my name and prayed they get saved, prayed they get right with God, prayed they quit professing to owe Jesus and act like a Christian should act. Guess what I preached? What mom wanted me to preach. And I told them those very things. And you know what? It was a barn burner. Now, have you noticed I'm a shy, backward sort of person? Have you learned that? I'm the quiet one in my family, people. It was one glory-hallelujah, baptismal funeral. And it was noisy from the time we started to the time we got done, but it was shouting ground, because my mom was with Jesus. It was a celebration! Scared some folks to death that were there, but what a testimony of the way it should be. And I didn't have to make this up. My mom was faithful. By choice, she was faithful. You know, you go to some funerals and you have to make stuff up. You know what I'm saying? The guy was a rascal. Oh, he was a good man. No, he wasn't. He was a cheat. He was a liar. The guy was just a pain to be... Now, don't point. We know they're everywhere. But my, you know what? I've been in... This is ordinary. I've been in some funerals, I'm going, am I in the right room here, you know? That ain't the guy I knew. But how joyous it is to do a funeral from a pastor's perspective when the guy's the real deal, or the lady, and just give testimony of their choice of faithfulness. That's where I really feel God's leading me this morning. And here's the question: What statement describes you? What if tomorrow is your funeral? Would they have to make up good stuff about you? That you were faithful, you were godly, you were a blessing to be around? You know what, folks? You need to make sure you have the testimony that needs to be set forth. One that not only, you know, really reflects your right choosing, but glorifies and honors God. So the question of the hour as far as this message, what is the statement that defines you? Now, let me give you some statements and places you don't want to go. How about this? "It doesn't matter what I do." Is that truth or is that a lie? That's a lie. Can I tell you right now, and I hope it smacks you right between the eyes, you're just as important to this ministry as anybody else in this building. So wake up and listen to... Some of you are already sleeping, and I'm not even into the message, okay? I know I'm like Samanex, okay? But listen, wake up. You are just as important. See, that's why it's so bad that you don't show up tonight. Because you don't fulfill your ministry responsibility in this church when you're not here. I know it sounds like we're picking on you. No, I'm trying to rescue you. I want you to be a better dad, a better mom, better kids, better servant in your neighborhood, your workplace, Jacques Penet, Walmarto, Targay, wherever you're going. I want you to be equipped and ready to be faithful. Why? Well, just like my mama, you choose to be faithful. You are just as important to the cause of crisis as anybody else. How about this one? "I'm going to do what makes me happy." Have you ever seen... You've been around those people? Folks, where does true happiness come if you read your Bible? Through holiness, being right with God. How many people married fifteen, sixteen times and they're still as miserable they were with number one? Or they've gone, they had no money, now they get money, and they're just as miserable. Why? Because they're trying to get what only Jesus can bring through their life with the right relationship with Him, and that's joy, peace, and contentment when the heart minored Christ. Boy, we're dumber than a brick most of the time, aren't we? And we wonder why this Christian stuff doesn't work. I can help you with that. Get with the program, so God can activate the promises of His will through the Word of God. Oh, I gotta keep going. I don't preach. All right, here's another one. "If it makes me popular or successful, that's what I'll do." You know what? That ain't going to hold water for all eternity. And besides, what is the choice going to do for you and your family? I've had a lot of guys, this is, I've seen this, and it just breaks my heart. A guy gets a promotion to be, make more money, you know, more accolades, more attention, more wowing, whatever position, and they move to a country, or they move to another town that has no fundamental Bible-believing church. Now, with all maybe good intention, we'll start a church, or we'll drive far enough. You know what? I've seen so many families take a nosedive because of popularity or success. I've seen teenagers compromise because they want to be the move-and-shake-and-get-down-get-up-again-ow person of their local school, or their friendships, or whatever. No, come on. That's never going to do for your life that which only Jesus can do, and being faithful unto Him. That's probably the biggie. "I'm going to do what I want to do when I want to do it." Isn't that the big challenge we face every day? Isn't that why some of you will go home and there's going to be a football game on, so you can't come to church? Or there's going to be, again, a family gathering. Is that a good testimony to the family gathering? Can't you tell them, "I'll be there after church"? Or say, "Hey, we're having revival. Let's all go to church together, and then we'll go home and party on." Huh? Huh? How's this for a little working the system in a right way to make an impact? The way we're supposed to make an impact. So what would sum up your life? It can really be described in one word. How about this contrast? A winner or a loser? Here's what I get for kids when I... I still do junior camps and stuff like that, as well as family camps. But you know what I tell people a winner is? A winner is a person who lives by faith, faith that comes by hearing, hearing by the Word of God. So what's a loser? A person who doesn't do that. Pretty simple. Here's another contrast. Are you wise or are you a fool? Are you worldly or spiritual? Faithful or unfaithful? And the saddest, of course, contrast, are you saved or lost? How are you known to be, and how will you be remembered? Because, again, it's a choice, and the choice will write on your life the statement that defines you. And folks, sometimes it's in big font. Are you all with me? And it's your own fault if it's not, hey, I'm here to please and honor God. Now, you guys don't know me as well as Pastor does, and we'll go know each other a lot better by the end of the week. But you know, if I have something I want to have put on my tombstone, you know what I want? Faithful servant of God. Not the... Boy, wasn't he good-looking? Wasn't he amazing in his musical talent? Oh, did this and that. No, I don't care about that. I just want to be known as a faithful servant of God. You know, our theme verse for the conference yesterday was 1 Corinthians 10:31. How many of you know that well enough to quote it? If not, just go with this anyway. "Whether therefore ye eat, or drink, or whatsoever ye do, do..." That was pathetic. "...do all to the glory of God." That covers all the bases, and that's why God convicted me for that to be my life verse. You know what I pray all the time? God, don't let me blow it. I'm seventy-two years old. I've got a pretty good track work going here. Don't let me fall prey to my flesh. Don't let me get lazy and just worthless for the cause of Christ. God, give me the power to stay faithful. Now, if you look into the Word of God, spiritual winners that live by doing right always have statements that describe their lives. Who made this? Who did this? "He purposed in his heart that he would not defile himself." Pastor, would you quit? Let your people answer the question. Halt the scene. I'm preacher. I'm educated. Can you hear me? I tell you, people, I will work with him. I promise I will. You got any duct tape? You got any duct tape? I know, it just oozes out of you. Showboat. You understand why I make the money I do, don't you? I have to deal with this everywhere I go. Okay, now, all right. Daniel, captured by the Chaldeans, trying to brainwash the boy. They're trying to go there and do that where he's not supposed to go to honor God. He says, "Hey, guys, I can't do that." Now, you know, he did it with the right spirit. Boy, what a great message to preach as far as ministry approach and doing right, the testimony of Daniel. He didn't apologize for doing right. He just was, again, very impacting with his spirit as well as his choices to honor God. How about this one? Who said this? "As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." Have you got that on your front door? A lot of folks do, a little plaque. You got it somewhere in your house. Most Christians that are Bible people have that somewhere. I do. You know, but that's Joshua. Joshua said, "I don't care what you guys are going to do. As far as I, when I'm in charge, those that are in my house, we're going to serve the Lord. You can do what you want to do when you get out of here, but as for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." This one you know real well. "For me to live is Christ." Who wrote that? The Apostle Paul, through the Holy Spirit's working, of course. I told him when one of my sessions, you know, all this stuff I just gave you ain't going to be worth too much unless you have that kind of commitment. Because, again, you'll get motivated by something or someone else, unless "for me to live is Christ." That's what I direct everything from. And this one is probably the most familiar. "Not my will, but thy will be done." Jesus, yeah. You know what that screams? Write these three words down, if not, try to remember them. It screams a selfless, sacrificial servant of God. Can you say that with me? A selfless, sacrificial servant of God. Jesus, that's Him, but that's supposed to be us. Now, winners have their statements, but so do losers. How about this guy? Here's the statement given about this guy. You guess who it is? Paul says, "Hath forsaken me, having loved this present world." Who's he talking about? Pastor is just busting. He's sitting there going, "I got it. I got it." Demas. How many of you have a child named Demas? Not unless you don't like the child, okay? You know, how many have a dog named Demas that you like to kick, okay? You know, we know why, because Demas is not thought of being faithful. Now, he was listed with Luke in another section of Scripture, but he got his eyes off of Jesus. He detached his heart from doing right. Happens to a lot of church folks, too. But Demas made a choice to say, "I want the world instead of Jesus," and he became a loser. God wants you and me to establish and strengthen our resolve or decision-making process that defines you and me, here are the three words again, as a selfless, sacrificial servant of God. Say it with me. A selfless, sacrificial servant of God. So again, the zillion-dollar question of the hour, and the reason I'm here is how do we do that? Go to Ephesians, chapter five. You thought I'd never get to the Word of God, didn't you? Go to Ephesians, chapter five. "I'm hungry like you are, so this will not take long." Look with me to Ephesians, chapter five. I'm going to give you four things, and it's going to be an alliterated outline, so you can take notes on this. I'd encourage you to mark these in your Bible. This is good for a devotional or maybe, you know, a little family time to discuss this. And it's very simple, but simply stated, it's a must as far as, again, having the right kind of testimony or representation for the work and will of God. It says in verse one of Ephesians, chapter five, and it's very, very straight up. "Be therefore," here's the word I want you to circle, "followers of God." How? With a childlike faith. "As dear children." Now, in the margin of your Bible, like I've done right beside here, write the word imitator, because that's what it literally means. You're here to imitate who God is. You all, you with me on that? Now, it's very obvious. I travel for a living. I fly a lot. I like to drive most of the time. I can take my golf clubs, my two guitars, my sound system, and my 320 pairs of shoes. I'm worse than a woman. Okay, and I like Hobby Lobby, too, so get over it. So what happened? As I travel and fly through airports and stuff, you know, I get a lot of delays, and I love watching the weirdness of people. It's just so entertaining and sad as far as life's representation of the world around us. But my favorite phrase when I see people at Walmart or in an airport is, "Did you look in the mirror before you came out of the house?" You know what I'm saying? So I'm watching these people, and it's so cute to watch these little kids mimic mom and dad. Have you ever seen it? You know, they walk like them. They just, some of them have an attitude like them. And it's just, the imitation is just so really fun to watch. But, folks, we need to make sure that people see in our walk that we reflect who Jesus is. Now, it goes on to give instruction through this passage, and it says in verse two, "Walk in love as Christ also hath loved us, and hath given Himself for an offering and a sacrifice to God as a sweet-smelling savor." And then it says, "Don't go there and do that." You know, well, you guys always preach the negative of the Word of God. Well, we preach the positive, too, but you just don't want to hear that you're in sin. And, folks, we've got to tell you what's bad as well as what's good if we're a balanced preacher of the Word of God. And God says, "No! No, flesh! If you're doing this, you're not right with God. You're in sin, fornication." The list just goes on, people, and then you don't rightly represent Jesus. There's no way you're a selfless, sacrificial servant of God because you have dirtied up your vessel by your flesh-feeding choices. So a lot of people want to be like that movie star, that sports star, or whatever the case may be. But the one you should work at 24/7 is being like my Jesus. Let's go down to the next one listed here. First of all, followers of God and finding out what pleases Him. Look down at verse 10, if you would, please, and circle the word proving. That just means taking time to find out, proving what's acceptable unto the Lord. Now, go down to verse 17, same type of thing is stated. It says, "Wherefore not be unwise, but understanding what the will of the Lord is." God's not playing hide-and-seek with us, people. We're, again, clueless because we choose to be clueless. We're foolish because we don't take time to find out very clearly and simply from the Word of God what we're supposed to be in due. Don't you blame your husband, or your kids, or your circumstances. It's your own fault. You don't take time to find out, so you don't find out what you need to know to do what you need to do. It's not that difficult. It's your fault because you didn't obey God, and you really don't care. Well, I care, brother. No, you don't. If you cared, you'd be reading and studying your Bible. If you cared, you'd do the work that God has entrusted to you as a steward of God's working. Quit crying to convince yourself that you're the picture of wonderful presentation when your life is all messed up by fleshly, carnal choosing. So first of all, if we're going to have the right kind of representation, presentation, selfless, sacrificial servant of God, you got to on purpose make sure you're reflecting who Jesus truly is. Listen to me, an attitude as well as action. Listen to me, an attitude as well as action. There's a lot of Christians that got a lot of stuff as far as knowledge and all that stuff, but they stink up the place with their attitude. You know, I preached a message to our church on Wednesday night. I go to a church in Simpsonville, South Carolina. It was our 45th, our 65th anniversary of the church and its establishment. But it was the pastor's 40th year as pastor. Can you imagine keeping him around that long? Oh, my goodness. But you know what? I preached out of Philippians, chapter 1, and talking about, again, these very things. And it starts out, make sure you have love, but with knowledge. To, again, have right judgment and do things that are excellent. Boy, that sounds like what we're preaching today, doesn't it? But guess what? Love without knowledge becomes very wrong in judgment. But knowledge without love also messes up the will and working of God. You come down like a, like some Gestapo agent preacher of the Word of God, and you wonder why people don't listen to you, let alone want what you have. I've got a guy right now, I'm not gonna mention his name, and I've confronted him with this. This guy is the most rude, knowledgeable, truth presenter that I've ever met in my life. He's constantly embarrassing people, putting people down, trying to straighten them out. He's got knowledge, but there's no love. Because love always has the other person's best interest in mind. This guy's always trying to prove his point and make his point. Is that you? You're smart. Man, you are a educated wonderment. If you'll sit down long enough, you'd probably just write your own little pedigree on a piece of paper and let everybody know about it. You're just, again, full of yourself. Yeah, you're smart, but you're still not right with God. Because you don't have a right presentation of knowledge and love to, again, make the right judgment and to set forth a testimony of excellence. That was for free, people. What an evangelist I am. All right, let's go down to number three. I'm dealing with pride like you are. Okay, so followers of God, finding out what pleases Him, and then, of course, do it. But that's the next point. Be a faithful steward of your time. I have very few major, big-time regrets in my life. But probably my biggest is this. Wasting my time on stuff that really doesn't matter. Hear me? Now have your recreation. Go kill Bambi. I don't care. Just don't miss church because of it. You with me? I don't, go, go, I love innocent. Invite me over, okay? Give me a little jerky. I'm a happy camper. But folks, not at the expense of unfaithfulness to the will and working of God. That's poor stewardship of your time that God's entrusted to you. Where's that found? Well, let's down verse 16 of the same passage. Look with me, if you would, please. Redeeming, being a good steward. Redeeming the time because the days are evil. Now, when you study the book of Ephesians, go ahead and study the book of Colossians, too. A lot of parallel truths and just different phraseology on the same lessons we need to learn, even on redeeming the time in chapter 4. It says the same thing almost exactly, but folks, we're not real good at that. Now, it's amazing how we seem to schedule in what we want to do when we want to do it. But that's not always pleasing and honoring God. And again, being faithful, like we're supposed to. So followers of God, finding out what pleases Him, then being a faithful steward of your time. Make choices, folks. Don't boast of tomorrow. Let's get it done today. Write that letter. Make that phone call. Send that email. Again, stay ministry-minded 24/7 and always be available for the leading of the Holy Spirit to make that impact for all eternity. Let's go to chapter 4, and we'll close this out. In chapter 4, it says, it says, And be not drunk with wine wherein is excess, but be filled, or that word is literally controlled by God. And again, folks, just like alcohol. It's not justifying you being a boozer and cruiser. I get so sick and tired and disgusted with the progressive boys of the hour that got their refrigerator full of wine, booze, and hooch, as we used to call it, okay? It's still a mockery. It's still something that controls and dictates how you think and what you do. Folks, I worked in bars and clubs for several years. Getting drunk ain't a pretty sight. Before or after, for you ones that were saved like I was later in life. It's just so hurtful to your thinking and your testimony and your ministry endeavors. Don't go there and do, that's not what this is talking about. This is just giving an example of how, when you take too much alcohol, it controls you. So you need to be, as, let me use the terminology, intoxicated with the Holy Spirit of God. You need to be so filled with the Holy Spirit. When you get bumped, that's what comes out. It's Jesus. Have you ever seen that illustration I just thought of? I don't usually throw this in, but I will. A guy named Ron Brooks and even a guy named Carl Herbstreit used to do the same illustration. But what he would do, he'd have the pews packed with teenagers. And what he'd do, he'd have all the teenagers come and just close off the aisle. Just come all the way here. Then he would take a glass of water and try to get through the crowd. Well, what happened? A lot of wet teenagers, okay? Which was fun. And he did a little bit more emphatically than he needed. But what he was trying to prove is, when you get bumped, is what comes out of your cup. You know, you're real happy, happy, happy Christian, Christian, Christian when it's good, good, good in your life, life, life. But when you get bumped, you're a nasty mama. I'll get you, my pretty. You know, and I'm gonna go send, yeah, but you sure aren't controlled by the Holy Spirit of God. That mouth is still a loose trap that just lets her fly. And boy, I tell you, it's amazing how many verses preach on the tongue and using your mouth not to tear people down, but to build people up. You can't say something nice? What's the phrase? Don't say anything at all. I had a young lady, I don't know if I use this illustration, but it's so funny, I'll tell you again. The assistant pastor at Colonial Hills Baptist Church's daughter, her name was Stephanie, and she was a motor mouth. They're here. I've been here enough. I know who they are in this church, too. But listen, 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 listen. This gal, I think she must have talked in her sleep. She was just always talking. Well, she was working up at Northland with us. And we didn't put her in too high, you know, responsible area. But she was, she was a servant, did a good job. But she rode with us to church with her little buddy, who was the quiet partner in the friendship. And we're going to church, and she just never shut up in time she got in, until time we got to church. And the preacher, guess what he preached on? The tongue. And basically, you know, how to edify instead of just rattle your jaw. Well, we get in the car, and we're driving down the road. I thought she fell out of the car. I really did, because I was, she just, I mean, I've known her since she was almost born, okay? And she, again, never shuts up. So finally I said, Steph, are you okay? She's packed, you're like, you know how you cry, but you don't really let her fly? I said, what's wrong? She says, preacher, could I ask you something? Or Brother Maynor. She said, did he say, if you're not gonna say something nice, you don't say anything at all? I said, well, that pretty much sums it up. Says, oh, Brother Mike, I'll never be able to speak again. Victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. I thought, oh, we've had revival in the backseat, brothers and sisters. Some people don't get that. Listen, if you're not gonna help build your family up, keep your trap shut, you know? And go pray about it, get your frustrations worked out on your knees, and let God, again, get you back to a sweet spirit. Remember, love and knowledge combined to make the right lasting impact. And folks, again, make sure you're controlled by the Holy Spirit of God. And I know, I know you can function most of the time without even checking in with God, but that's a foolish choice. And that's why a lot of churches are dead. Because you're functioning, but you're not controlled by the Spirit. You listening? Is that, is that an ouch to your heart? I hope it should be. I hope it will be, because it should be. Because you're not, how dare you run what belongs to Jesus? You're bought with a price. You're here to glorify God in your body and your spirit, which are His, and you're running something that doesn't belong to you. Again, you're making a decision to come to revival. I don't think that's your call. You're supposed to say, God, not my will, but what? Thy will be done? What's that scream, boys and girls? A selfless, sacrificial servant of God. Again, with my mama. It wasn't real hard to work up a sermon. I knew what her testimony screamed. Selfless, sacrificial servant of God. We did my dad's funeral. We had like 400 and some people there. Filled the auditorium of Grace Baptist Church in Muncie, Indiana. You know what I heard over and over again? Your dad led me to Jesus. Your dad, God used your dad to call me to preach. God used your dad. I mean, folks, I'm not talking like two or three. I mean, couple, individual after individual. And couple kept saying, your dad was used of God to impact my heart for all eternity. Guess what? That was an on-purpose choice of my dad. He chose to have a statement of life that defined him as faithful. So again, let's go back to the, let's go back to the beginning, Willie. What if we had your funeral this week? What would they say about you? That would, again, reflect what we're preaching on, would really be the testimony of faithfulness? If not, I got some hope and help for you. You can fix that today. As Pastor said, we were in the back of the church. We served the God of second chances. And for some of us stubborn people, fifth, sixth, 25th, 33,455 times, we've blown it. If we confess it and forsake it, He forgives us, folks. He's in the forgiving business. And I don't care how long you've blown it. I don't care how much you've blown it. You can establish from here on out a testimony that shows my Jesus. And what's the testimony of Jesus? Say those three words with me. A selfless, sacrificial servant of God. Would you bow your heads and hearts, please? Heads bowed and eyes closed. Now, folks, again, the invitation's not real difficult to understand, and it may be difficult to respond to. But you know what? I think you get it. The question is, are you gonna look to get it done biblically? Are you, are you ready to quit making wrong choices and start making the right choice? Now, that may take some effort of embarrassment to you with your personality. But you know what? Worry more about God than you do your embarrassment and what people think. Maybe you just need to come and re-up. Reboot, like we say. And get it reestablished in your heart and mind that I want the right statement that defines me as a selfless, sacrificial servant of God. Now, let me say it again. You can't do any of this right unless you know my Jesus. Unless you're saved. Because you don't have the Holy Spirit of God. But when you have the Holy Spirit of God, again, you can do whatever God orders up, no matter your circumstances, your personality, your position of life, the parents you have, the wife or husband you've been blessed with. You're a blame shifter. Quit making excuses. And maybe today, just humbly come before a holy God and say, God, fix what's broken in my heart and life. And let my testimony be unquestionable as that selfless, sacrificial servant of God. Would you stand with your heads bowed and your eyes closed? I'm gonna have a word of prayer. We're not gonna do any singing this morning. I want you to keep thinking through what God's taught you, but also what God's convicted you about. And it's, again, we're not here to embarrass anybody. I understand you can make the decision in your seat, but sometimes it's really, really impacting for you and others when you get out of your comfort zone and, again, unashamed respond in a public fashion to an invitation like this. Right? This is not all about us, folks. It's, again, to draw attention to the work of God and His goodness. So if you need to come and get something taken care of, you know, come down here for three days. Come down, get it right. Go back to your seat. You need some help. Pastor's here. I'm here. There's other godly people in this church who would love to help you kick the devil in the flesh and the teeth. I mean, seriously. But you have not. Why? You don't ask. You don't seek that remodeling or that work that only God can do. Again, folks, I don't care if you're a visitor, church member, watching via technology. Get on your face before God. And if it's broken, let God fix it. If it needs to be improved, ask God to help you improve it. So your testimony is unquestionable. I'm here to show who my Jesus is. Heavenly Father, help us now, as we have this brief invitation. Lord, you know, I don't like long invitations. Most of these folks don't either. But Lord, help us to go long enough for folks to let go of the back of the pew, again, to let go of their pride-filled hesitations or whatever it keeps them, Lord, from doing what they know is right to do. And Lord, help them, again, to get in the mindset of yes, instead of no, even on this invitation. Oh, God, how exciting, how exciting it would be to have someone receive Jesus as Savior. They've been fighting this snake for who knows how long. And they need to know Jesus before they leave this building. That would be so exciting to see, even here today. So Lord, again, we rejoice in your wherewithal. Help us to yield to your working. With heads bowed and eyes closed, as our pianists play, God's dealing with your heart, obviously. You respond to His loving, leading hand. Won't you come? I'll wait on you if I see you coming. With your heads bowed and eyes closed, let me, let me give you an observation that I have noticed. Hold just a second, if you would, please. What I've noticed is, usually the folks that are already getting it done are the first ones to respond. First of all. Second observation, it's usually more women than men. That is pathetic and sad. Folks, being a selfless, sacrificial servant of God is not a sissy thing. It's the most manly thing you could be and do. Because it's being like Jesus. It doesn't get better than that. But men, I know who I'm preaching to. I'm one of those creatures myself. And I know how consumed I can be with Mike Maynor, doing what I want to do, when I want to do it. And you know what? I cheat the cause of Christ. I hurt this church, or the church I'm a part of. And that's the same thing happens to you. We need more male leadership and more men that are tender and responsive, unashamed, even in preaching times like this. I, again, there's folks here from New Buffalo that I've preached to for years. They know I don't like, usually do more than two or three verses of an invitation. But I'm gonna give one more. Because I think that God's working on hearts. You can just, you can just tell it's a great spirit here today. But if you need to make a decision, why don't you just get on your knees before God? Broken, yielded to Him. Say, oh, God, make sure I don't blow this. God, if I don't have that kind of sweet, sacrificial servant of God, Spirit, God stir that up in me through your power. And let God use you like He's never used you before. One more verse. No one comes. I'll give them back to preacher, but this is your verse. Won't you come? Teenagers, too. Just as much for you. All right. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, I've found that just making a simple decision for the Lord can make all the difference in your total trajectory, the way you're going. And sometimes it's, you know what? There's a course I learned years ago. Just, I'll say, yes, Lord, yes, to your will and to your way. I'll say, yes, Lord, yes. And it's a position that we take in our hearts and minds. You know what? God said it. That settles it. I'll, I'll do it. Amen? Amen? And, you know, I like what, years ago, I heard Billy Sunday said. He said he was preaching, and someone came to him after the service and said, "You know what, Billy? Your preaching rubbed me the wrong way." And he says, "Well, turn the cat around." Amen? Turn the cat around. If preaching, you know, what I've found is, if God makes me feel uncomfortable, it's because He wants to make me comfortable with Him again. And if God speaks to me, that's because there's something He wants me to change, something make, make, make my spirit comfortable with God's presence once again. I appreciate that. Amen? And I appreciate the message this morning, and Sunday School. I want you to come back tonight. Amen? As you're going out, you may not leave until you promise you'll be back. No, I'm just kidding. But come back tonight. If you do it for, do it for me, do it for yourself, do it for Jesus, do it for Brother Mike, but come back tonight, and you'd just be surprised what God will do. I have found that God has just special things for you. Take that extra step. Do what you're not used to doing. Come back tonight and see what God will do for you. Amen? And let's bow for a word of prayer. We're dismissed. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful today for your goodness, your love, and, Lord, you said that if we know these things, happy, happy are we if we do them. And, Lord, sometimes the desire to do just needs to be accompanied by the action. I'm just gonna get up and go on and do it. Lord, I pray that you'd help each of us to be determined to let go and let you have your way in our lives. I pray that you'd bless in our service tonight. Lord, I pray that we'd be able to have visitors come. I pray that, Lord, we just see you work in our lives, and, Lord, we're not looking for necessarily superficial changes, we're looking that you will change us within and cause us to be different without. Lord, work in our lives, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen? And you may be dismissed.